Remember Kevan?
Here.
Remember Mason?
Here.
Remember Snyder?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we're authorized to act. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the April 21st, 2020 Board meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review any changes?
I make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are adopted. Next item, Mr. Denton. Item three is a review of the financials for the month ending April 30th, 2020.
Yes, the Frankfurt Plant Board is a customer-owned nonprofit municipal utility with a fiscal year ending June 30. Before we get started in presenting the financials, I'd like to give a quick report on our situation with our audit. The Kentucky revised statutes that form the Frankfurt Plant Board require an annual audit by an external public accounting firm. The Board of Directors has retained Crow for this current fiscal year audit ending June 30, 2020. We had our budget, our audit kickoff meeting last week with the audit partner, audit manager and staff. Kind of setting up questions about how this year's going, setting field work dates. And also have began answering document requests from our finance and IT departments. So we expect to have that completed audit report to the board in September or October like we usually do. If there are any questions about the audit process, I'd be happy to answer those, but they just want to give you a little update of where we are. I'd like to go ahead and just start the financial presentation. This is for the 10 months ending in April 2020. So I'm looking here at our board packet, looking at the, starting on page 17. You'll notice when you look at our statement of net position, our cash and financial statements, and also our debt that we've had compared year over year, had a good year. Our assets are up 2.4%. Our total liabilities are down just over 10%. And total net position is also up 2.4%. Cash is solid compared to last year, and we've paid down our total debt. As we started the year out, we're down 11% from where we started this fiscal year out. And as you'll see from the budget draft that we'll release tomorrow, we're on track to release our total long-term debt by 43% over the next five years. So we're on a good, good path with our balance sheet. When you look at our financial performance for the first 10 months of the year, we're almost exactly in line with our budget projections. And as far as our total expenses go, we're down 4%. And that 4% decrease has been driven primarily by a 13% decrease in our wholesale power cost, which is due to our lower rates that we have with KYMEA, our wholesale power provider. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have about the financials, but that's our quick summary for this month.
Maybe David, would this be a good time? In terms of the budget, we're going to get that, what, in the next couple of days, the board members, your draft?
Yes, we're going to be putting together the paper copies tomorrow for everyone, and then we'll send out the paper in electronic versions tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay, maybe if I could kind of open it up for the board to discuss, I was wanting to propose for y'all to discuss and see if you want to do it. I've talked to Gary just a little bit to maybe see, in accordance with the governor's recommendations for groups under 10 and so forth, if maybe around the first, give everybody a chance to review it. If you have any questions, obviously send them to David, Gary, or whoever, so they kind of filter them out and get answers back to everybody. And then maybe looking for maybe the first week in June, maybe try to schedule an in-person. We could do it, I think, with less than 10, maybe the board, David, Gary, Vint, and then have people available. And, you know, we wear masks, socially distance, spread out into a boardroom and try to go through it. And that way, everybody could, we wouldn't have to put a big group there in the meeting. We could broadcast it, obviously, for the public. And maybe ask Gary to check with everybody and check on times and availability. By that point, the governor's order to allow groups of 10 or less would be in place. So does anybody have a feelings about that? Does that sound like something we want to do or just kind of open it up?
Yeah, John, I think it's a good idea, probably, you know, like you said, around, maybe around the first of, first week of June would probably be good. I think, I think that's very doable.
Dawn?
I agree. I think it would be good. I think it helps to have in-person discussion rather than doing it virtually.
And we could go through it then and ask if there's any changes, discussion, whatever, get those resolved. And then we could have it for a vote at the June meeting, and that lets David make his timeline to get it submitted for June 30. Steve, is that okay with you?
Yeah, my only question is how do we accommodate the public with that? I mean, do they, do they, is that, are they just on remotely or, you know?
I think, isn't that the way the, is Hanson here with us or?
Yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
How does that work? Can you answer Steve's question for all of us?
It's sort of a hybrid kind of a question. I think the Attorney General opinion allows this video, a video meeting like this. But then when you have an in-person meeting with less than 10 people, I think I would kind of combine the two and sort of have a link for, once you have your 10 people in the, in the meeting space, that sort of caps it. And then I think if the Open Meetings Act says you have to have reasonable, sort of reasonable under the circumstances, meeting facilities, and I would, I would read that to kind of encompass sort of this, this arrangement. You have your 10 people in the room, and then you have a video link set up for those that are in excess of that. So I think you could do that. I think you could accommodate that.
And you could research that and make sure we do that correctly?
Yes, I don't know that there's a whole lot of new authority. I think we might be plowing some new ground, so, but I think that's, that would, that would work.
I've seen the city commission meet a couple of times, and how's the public attending those meetings? When the, I see them meeting, some of them are in the city commission chamber, some are remotely. And I don't, I assume the public is just, well, I've been watching it, of course, on cable 10, so I mean, is the public viewing those meetings when they're on or?
I don't, I don't know how the public would, I think if you're, if you've got more than, if you're, you have to keep the physical social distancing requirements of the governor's order, so I don't know how they're, how they're doing, doing that with the, I thought they were meeting by video meetings.
Well, I think one of the times they met, they met at the Emergency Operations Center. I don't think they were meeting in the city commission chambers. Is that right?
That's right, you're right. Yeah, that was a different looking room.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, but I think their notice for their meeting is the same as ours that gives the link for the public to, to hook on, you know, to be able to watch the meeting.
Yeah, I think they've been providing a Zoom link or some sort of video link for the public to just, so they can watch it, but they can't participate.
Okay.
My understanding.
David, does that kind of timeline work out for you?
It does. In the, in the budget timeline we issued out in February, we had set June 2nd as a time to meet with the board and go through the budget, so that's right in line with what we were planning on.
Okay, so Gary, if that's all right with everybody, I'll ask you maybe to poll everybody, find out when's a good time, and to make up whatever kind of physical arrangements, adjustments there where we can be spread out as far as possible. Everybody at a separate table and with masks and everything, and see what we can put together, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes, sir. We can start our process tomorrow morning.
Okay, I don't think we need any kind of motion or anything on that, do we?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, I need a motion to accept the financials. If there's any, first, are there any questions on the financials from David?
John, is this, is this where we, were we going to talk later about where we are in terms of the last couple of cycles, what our delinquents are and our non-payments? I know we're not cutting anybody off. I know.
Oh, no.
Yeah. But I don't know if this is the spot to ask about how that's going in comparison to just a typical billing cycles in April.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think this, we all go and do it. David, you want to talk about it a little bit?
Sure, I'd be glad to. As Mr. Snyder mentioned, and this is probably a good time to talk about what we're doing right now. I believe that we closed our lobby on March 18th, and the day before, at our March Board meeting, announced that the Frankfurt Plant Board would be voluntarily suspending utility service disconnections and late fees to our customers for 30 days, and we would reassess in 30 days. We didn't look at that in April and decided to extend another 30 days. In that time, we had Governor Beshear issued a executive order 2020-323 that was to state that we should discontinue and suspend utility service disconnections until we get past the state of emergency for COVID-19, so we're continuing to suspend those. We do see that our customers are taking advantage of this as far as an increase in those that are rolling a balance, a balance from period to period. So those that are, that are paying late, we have seen an increase in that, and we suspected that, and we did it for a reason because people are finding, you know, themselves on difficult times with the economic situation that we're going through. So when you look at late payment versus bad debt, we are actually doing, in line with our budget estimates for our bad debt for fiscal year 1920. So right now, we're continuing to ask customers that if you find yourself in a situation that you need financial assistance, we've got some really handy information out on our website, on our COVID-19 website, fpb.cc, for those to find different types of community help and resources to help customers during this time. And we're also, like I said, continuing to expand, expand that service disconnection and late fees. So Mr. Snyder, we are seeing increased numbers as far as past due balances, but we also see people are beginning to pay. We ask our customers when they do know they need assistance to give us a call. We'd be glad to set up a payment arrangement. We do that every month, and we'll work with our customers based on their situation and work to get them on a payment plan that can get them up to date.
Okay, okay. Does that give you what you need, John?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, any other questions for David? If not, do I have a motion to accept the financials?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No? No nos? Motion, financials are accepted. Gary, you want to, we're going to do an abbreviated like we did last time, department reports, kind of hit the telecommunications, customer service, and anything else where there's, anything we need to cover? You want to kind of lead us through that, Gary, and call the people that you want to bring up?
Yes, sir. I mean, we can start at the two part of it. One is David can help us on the customer service part. And another part, we will ask Van help me on the telecommunication.
Okay.
In-house installation status. Adam or Van are going to help me. David, you want to start it?
Sure. So I'd like to start, just briefly talk about what we've done over the last two months since we closed our lobby. Even though we closed our lobby back in mid-March, our staff has continued to come in and work every day during this COVID-19 situation. We've had our drive-through open, continuing to be open. Our cashiers have come in and still accepting cash, checks, money orders. Through our drive-through, you can pay in cash through our depository drop box in the front of our building. We're accepting checks and money orders, and we have electronic e-check that you can get when you sign up on our customer portal. You can do automatic bank draft, and you can also go through your own bank and set up a payment with us. So we have about eight different ways to pay, including accepting payments at our local, three different local banks that we can do. So I appreciate our staff that's continued to work in, continue to work during this time. What we, we would like to discuss also what we're looking at going forward. We are looking at, you know, tentatively opening up our office on June the 15th. We are encouraging our customers to continue to do business with us as they can over the phone and over internet. But on June the 15th, we're going to be working through plans, following all of the protocols with State of Kentucky's healthy at work, and having our lobby open for special cases. We're going to have more information about that over the next month as we roll out that information to our customers. But we will encourage our customers to continue to use all of our technology we have through phone, internet, our customer portal, and all of our electronic payment methods, that they can do their business wherever they choose to do business with us in a safe and healthy way. So we've been noticing that we are hitting our goals of one-minute wait times. We're actually much below that for the month of April. When we don't, or suspended service disconnections, that's one of the largest four days of the month that we have in peak calls and office visits. So whenever you've suspended that, that situation, it really has helped make all the rest of our operations and customer service much, much more smooth. So that's a little update of where we are on customer service. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have on that.
Does anybody have any questions, David? Especially, anybody want to ask some questions of David or Gary about the opening date and any questions about that?
If the board doesn't have any questions, I can, I could talk a little bit about the operations side of what we'll be doing and opening up additional things on June 1st if you would like that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay. So again, from the operating side, during this whole situation, much as David said, we've maintained our services to our customers. But except for a few exceptions, it has been difficult to do large maintenance projects, large capital-type projects, because we're operating in small teams and rotating some of those teams on their work schedules. So as David says, beginning on June 1st, we will bring all of those crews in. They will still work in teams, and we will still have some staggered start and stop times for those folks. But we will be able to get the entire workforce out there, working on our projects and getting those kind of things done. Again, through this entire process, we have been all, we've been working, we've been able to maintain our services, but we can't do the larger projects and the larger maintenance things that we, we need to continue to do every day. So that will give us the ability on June 1st to get back on a lot of those particular pieces. Another element that we will add is currently, our telecom installers are not able to go into the home to do installs for the obvious reasons, but starting June 1st, with the proper PPE, and if we have no other options, if we're not able to assist the customer on the phone or with videos and some of the things that we have been doing, if we're still unable to help a customer get their service going, then on June 1st, we will, again, with the proper PPE, to protect both our employees and our customers, we will go in, in those kind of situations to be able to get the businesses back up and running. As we do this process, we will continue to do our social distancing that we need to do. We're going to have our PPE that we need to be wearing, and we will continue to operate in teams because operating in teams continues to provide that section ability of our workforce. If we do have issues, it only takes out smaller pieces of our workforce. So we will continue to do that. The folks that can do their job functions remotely, we will continue to do that as well. Generally, I don't think from an operational standpoint, our customers are probably really going to see that much of a difference. It's just, it's been difficult for us to work on our major maintenance projects because we, we just can't get a lot of bodies out there working on those projects currently. So, you know, again, we're going to be following all the government mandates and recommendations to keep our employees safe and absolutely to keep our customers safe. So that's how we will be handling it, starting June 1st.
Any board comments, questions, any questions or things you want to ask about?
Mr. Chairman, is that okay? Is a good time? I can ask Van to report that the incident happened Friday?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Friday, and I'm sure you were bored and many of the public, Friday night about 10:00 PM, we had a large tree fall off the hill on Taylor Avenue onto one of our power lines. And that particular power knocked out power to a part of downtown, including our network facility. That facility, as a result of that, we experienced two mechanical failures kind of in sequence on the redundant systems that we have, and that eventually caused that network facility to, and the servers there to go offline. So that in turn is what created the internet and telephone service interruptions in the evening and in the Saturday morning. Currently, we're still investigating exactly what caused it and the mechanical failures. We're going to work with the manufacturers to try to determine exactly what we think our next step should be. Do we need to completely replace some things? Are some of the items repairable? And so we will move forward with that as we do more and more of our homework this week. But again, we would like to personally apologize for this, you know, we really hate that that service interruption happened and that they experienced the problems that they did, so we're very sorry about that. And hopefully, after this situation, we'll be able to make this particular piece stronger than it was even before.
Okay. Any questions or comments about that?
I just have a comment. I just like to thank the staff during this whole time. I think everyone has done an excellent job. It's been difficult for everyone, and I think our customers have really been able to, using the popular word seamlessly, continue with the services that we provide. And I think that we really owe a vote of thanks to the staff for doing such a great job during difficult circumstances.
I think, I think, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think all of us feel the same way that we appreciate everything you all done and to keep service going and make sure our customers were responded to and that everybody was getting the water, the cable, electric, and that that they count on. So I think from behalf of the whole board, we appreciate what you have done.
Absolutely, yeah.
And just real quick too, I know Vint probably be talking maybe about more of the electric stuff, but, but I noticed that the Plant Board received a certificate of excellence and reliability from the APPA, and I just wanted to say that's great and thank you all for, again, you know, it's because of the good work that you all do that the Plant Board was able to be one of the utilities that received this certificate of excellence and reliability. So I just wanted to give a shout out to you all for that.
Any other, any other department reports, Gary, that we need to cover? For anybody watching, of course, the board members already have it, but for anybody watching, all the material, all the board information is available online if anybody wants to see all the reports of all the departments. Anything else we need to cover on the department reports during this meeting, Gary?
No, we don't, except if you have any question.
Yeah, we're good. Steve? You okay?
Looking at the agenda.
Okay, item 5.1 then is action items. Consider award of bid invitation number 1695, annual price contract for tree trimming to Wright's Tree Trimming Service. Mr. Hudson, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Hope you can hear me.
Yes, sure can.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, sir. Good evening to everybody. Yes, the Frankfurt Plant Board Electric Department put out a tree bid for the tree trimming services this coming budget year of '21. Last time we did a bid, I mean, a tree service bid was in 19, I mean, 2017, sorry. And at that time, it was awarded to Asplund Tree Services. That previous bid, we did a one-year bid with a four-year renewal option, so this year we're technically in a renewal option. Back in January, February this year, Asplund came to us in a meeting and kind of had a sit-down talk meeting with us and kind of talked about that they was really interested in trying to negotiate some raises for this upcoming renewal season if they could, because they were behind on the, on some of their labor and other, other expenses. So at that time, we kind of told them then, with the contract we have of renewal, we cannot just negotiate money. So at that point in time, we decided to go ahead and put the new bid out, since we knew we're expecting to happen what's going to happen. So we did put the bid out. We did send it to four different vendors. The four vendors that we sent them to were vendors who were actually working around the city of Frankfurt with other utility companies. Shelby Energy, KU, Bluegrass Energy, so all these, all these companies around us are using these four different vendors also. We got, and we also put it on the public website, which we got the four responses from the four people we did send them to. And you will see that there is a 40% increase from our last time we budgeted, our last time we did a tree bid to this time. And I will say that, you know, we kind of expected that was going to happen just because of the conversation we did have with Asplund back in the first part of the year, wanted to go ahead and negotiate some, some significant raises then. And, you know, I actually kind of went back and looked at the bid back in 2017. And we've always kind of thought maybe Asplund was a little low on their bid back in 2017. We only had two, two people apply, or not two people, we only had two responses back in 2017. If you go back and look at the, one of the ones who did a, did submit a bid, then also submitted a bid now. And from 2017 to 2020, his, his bid only went up about $3 a person. So, you know, Asplund, at that time, Asplund was about $10, $11 cheaper than they were. So, you know, we, we kind of hate to say, we kind of expected a large increase. And we'll tell you that between the four different vendors, there's only, from the bottom vendor to the top vendor, there's only about $76,000 difference between the four. So I don't think that the, any one is higher than the other, in a sense, is unsensible. They're all relatively really, really close. It's very unusual to see that many tree trimming companies relatively close in that, in that realm. We, we did do the, let Mr. Price review the contracts. He was okay with what he found, that there was the two lower bids, did make exceptions to the bid contract. They were wanting to negotiate the cost of living raise, which in our contract, we always put that they're allowed to, in the renewal stages, they're allowed the CPI, so whatever the CPI was, whatever it was, is what we usually let them have for cost of living raise. But they chose to want to negotiate, and one actually put they required a 3% every year. So we kind of threw those two out, left the right tree services is the lowest bid. And the worst-case scenario, would you, you know, the $925,000 is what we put into budget. And of course, the, you'll see the bid, the budget here in the next day or two, and you'll see that the, it's, we've kind of absorbed the extra costs in the budget. It's, it's not, it didn't put us into the, into the red. Our budget is still really strong for Electric Department, so this, this really hasn't affected our budget a lot. And I will, one more thing about the tree trimming services, that the, even though it's at $925,000, if you look in the item I only put, last year we had $625,000 in the budget. And right now, as of April, Electric Department's only spent about $438,000. And I would estimate, can't estimate, but I will say that even though we put $925,000 and Wright Tree Services for 917, whatever it was, that hopefully we'll not spend that money. That's the worst-case scenario, if that makes any sense. Tree trimmers don't work when it rains, when it snows, if it's really, really cold, when everybody else has to work, you know, they, they don't, they don't work, they don't get paid. So they don't have vacation time, they don't have sick time, they don't have anything through us or with the company. They have to be on our site working in order for them to get charged to us and for us to have to pay for them. So, you know, that, that number in the budget or in the contract is the worst-case scenario. I would anticipate it to be lower than what that would be at the end when we get closer to the end of the budget and do it again next year. So I hope that's helped any decision, and that's kind of where we want to, we're recommending Wright Tree Services based upon all the information I just said. Well, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Okay, does anybody have some questions, any questions for Scott?
Yeah, I have a question, and I know I asked it the other day, but I guess I didn't get it, I didn't sink in. You started out saying that we had a renewable contract. Currently, we have a contractor had a renewable clause on it for the next couple of years?
Yes, sir. We do, like, the old bid was for a one-year contract with up to four years renewable. Then the renewable, the renewed part is where if we're happy with their services and if they're willing to keep their prices such as the original contract was, then we would agree that they could, you know, if we both agreed on it, then they could resume, keep on going as they were. As I said earlier, that, you know, back in January, February, they came to us and kind of already said that, you know, this year, we need, we want to negotiate some price increases for the renewal. And at that point, go ahead.
So, so what I'm asking is, the contract, the contractor we're currently under, does it have more years that it can be renewed under?
Let me try to answer that for you. The new, the contract- Um, the new, the contract had a specific terms that was for a couple of years, and then it had the ability to renew. When you got to those renewal periods, as long as the terms stay the same and they ask for no more than the C P I, and both parties want to extend it, we could. In this case, they chose, they did not want to keep the C P I the same. So I guess what you could say is the voluntary extension, that party did not want to abide. So they, we would not do a voluntary extension because they didn't abide by that particular piece. They weren't requiring.
So there was no cost restraint put in the contract uh, that went along with the ability to renew.
There was, I think it was a three-year term, there was for those three years. If you want to renew without having to rebid it all, and they want to keep the terms the same, they could.
What I'm asking, Ben, I understand you're saying that there were none in the contract that they can pretty much come and say, look, we don't want to go forward with this because we we aren't going to agree with the three percent. The question I'm asking, and actually, I'm thinking about this contract now. If you have a renewable clause in it, that benefits obviously both people in some ways, but part of that benefit is a hedge against cost increases going forward. So does this contract have some kind of hedge? If it has a renewable clause in it, does it have some hedge in it against costs? Even for both parties in it, you know?
Well, for three years, it is limited in cost changes based on only the C P I increases. So for three years, they they can't increase it more than the C P I. Once we get to, after that third year, we get to the fourth year, if both parties want to continue, we have that option. If they say at that point, we don't want the C P I, we want more, or we wouldn't provide whatever, then both parties, we do, we don't renew it and we rebid, just like we've done this year.
Okay.
It's just, so so short answer, our expenses over this contract are limited to the C P I each year.
Over the next three years.
Three years, then by mutual agreement, the last two.
Correct, just like what what has passed. If they wanted to continue it, we could have had the option to continue or rebid.
And they and they chose not to this time.
They they chose that they needed a significant increase. And now that we've gone to market, we see that that is truly what the market was being.
Yeah, right, okay. Any other questions? If not, uh, do I have a motion on approving this contract?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the award of bid invitation sixteen ninety-five, the annual price contract for to for tree trimming to Wright's Tree Trimming Service.
Hey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contract's approved. Con, uh, item number five point two, consider approving A X S T V and H D net movies renewal. Uh, Mr. Couch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, staff recommends the approval of the Access TV and H D net movies renewal. This is a N C T C agreement with a term through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's a rate reset with a reduction of twelve and a half percent on access and twenty percent on H D net movies. Uh, and then the rates stay flat throughout the term, so those are all numbers that we'd like to hear. Um, Access TV is on preferred cable and H D net movies is on H D plus. Uh, the agreement includes B O D and T B E rights, and there are no additional carriage requirements or obligations. Um, and Mr. Price has reviewed the agreement and meets with his approval, so I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item.
So customers, there's no increased cost for this for us?
That is correct. Yep.
Any questions of Harvey?
Nope. Motion to approve.
If not, do we have a motion? Just got it. Is that you, Steve?
Yes.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Contracts approved. Item five point three, consider approving ovation extension. Mr. Couch?
Thank you, sir. Uh, staff recommends approval of the ovation extension. Uh, this is an extension to a current N C T C agreement with a term through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the rate reset this year is a reduction again of seventeen percent. And then annual increases at three and a half percent, which are within our budgeted parameters. Uh, ovations on preferred cable, channel one seventeen. There are no additional carriage requirements or obligations, and Mr. Price has reviewed this extension and meets with his approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this item.
Any questions of Harvey? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Need a motion.
Motion.
I'm sorry, that's right, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the ovation contract.
A second.
Any discussion? Now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contracts approved. God, Harvey, this is, this is your show tonight, buddy. Item five point four, consider approving Stingray Music Extension. Harvey?
All right, uh, staff recommends approval of the Stingray Music Extension. This is an extension to a current N C T C agreement with a term through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Stingray Music is a digital music service on our preferred cable tier with fifty channels of a commercial-free digital music. Um, there is no rate reset on this year, uh, the rate will remain the same. And then annual increases will be based on C P I, uh, which is within our budgeted projections. So, um, no additional carriage requirements or obligations. And Mr. Price has reviewed it and meets with his approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on this item.
Any questions of Harvey? Is this a pretty popular Harvey, this?
Yeah, no, people actually do do use this, and and there's a companion, um, mobile application for for iPhone and Android, and people use that a lot too. So it's it's a good, good service.
Any questions of Harvey? Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Contracts approved. Harvey, it's your turn again. Five point five, consider approving Turner Network Service Extension.
All right, thank you. Uh, Cable Advisory Committee and staff recommend the board approve the N C T C extension to the current Turner Network Services Agreement. Uh, this, our our previous agreement expired at the end of April, uh, this year. And and I think the, um, with all the situation with COVID nineteen, I think both Turner and the N C T C agreed, uh, not to, not to push too hard on a, on a massive renewal and just sort of extend out our existing agreement. So this, this extension goes through April thirtieth of twenty twenty-three uh, and covers lots of popular networks on classic cable, CNN, T V S, T N T, Cartoon Network, True T V, among others. And, um, there's no rate increase in twenty twenty, uh, and then annual increases beginning in twenty twenty-one averaged six percent across the group, uh, which, uh, was budgeted and anticipated. Uh, if you don't know, these, uh, these channels carry, uh, lots of the games of the N C W A basketball tournament when when it happens, didn't happen this year, but in the future. Uh, and those are consistently some of the highest rated programs every year in Frankfort. So no additional carriage requirements, uh, on this agreement. And, uh, Mr. Price reviewed it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is this, Harvey, are you seeing, are the cable companies not being, not asking for as much in terms of increases? Are they pretty much holding pretty steady, or is that what you're seeing across the board?
Do you have any wood to knock on? I mean, it seems like it has been, it's been pretty good, that the smaller independents have generally either gone backwards or stayed flat, and then bigger guys have have not been real aggressive on their reset. So I'm fingers crossed for retrans at the end of the year, and we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Any questions of Harvey? Okay, if not, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the contract's approved. Harvey, it's your turn again. Five point six, consider approving H B O Max Agreement.
All right, so staff recommends approval of this H B O Max Agreement is an N C T C agreement with a term through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. Um, it covers all the H B O networks, uh, which are channels three hundred through three oh seven, um, as well as on-demand and and what we currently offer of H B O Go for those subscribers on their connected devices. Um, this agreement, uh, affords F P B the the opportunity to lower, uh, our wholesale rate immediately. Uh, and there are no annual increases, uh, through the term of the agreement. And it will also allow us to pair, so this H B O Max service will be offered um, directly to consumers by H B O, and it is going to contain uh, H B O programming similar to what they offer today of H B O Now, which is their direct-to-consumer offering. This is going to replace that and also supplement it with, uh, some library content from Warner Brothers, uh, which is something that that, uh, has happened during mergers. But what this will allow us to do is is pair, when a, when a customer subscribes to H B O on the, on cable system, we'll be able to provide them H B O Max in addition to it for no additional cost. So basically, for the same price, the customer will get the regular channels, but then they'll also be able to get access to H B O Max. So, um, I think this is a win-win for for everybody, for our customers certainly, and, uh, and for the plant board and and hopefully H B O as well. So, um, the the direct-to-consumer price is fourteen ninety-five. Um, and this agreement will allow us to to offer our customers all that content at a, at a similar price point. So, um, Mr. Price has reviewed this, uh, agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on it.
Any questions for Harvey? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
Second, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Contracts approved. Item number six, uh, Mr. General Manager, do you have some comments for us?
I don't have directly, but I would like Kathy Lindy help me to play a couple of radio, if you don't mind.
Sure. Kathy?
Hi. Uh, we, in in our team, media services and communications have been busy as well, uh, throughout this whole process of of quarantine, we've been, we've been keeping up our communication with our customers, and we've been doing that through social media and through Cable Ten. We've put together some videos that, uh, that we, uh, have put out this this month. So the first one I have is the We Are F P B, it's a new, it's a thirty-second spot that is running cross-channel on cable. Uh, the second one, uh, May, May's been busy. So the the second one is our Drinking Water Week, which was the first week of of May that we put out a video about that. And then also, as schools were closing and it was Teacher Appreciation Week, the same week as Drinking Water Week, uh, we really wanted to show our teachers, uh, from our employees who are parents, uh, how much we appreciate what our teachers do for our kids. So, uh, I will share my screen and share these videos with you, but bear with me, it may take just a second. All right, number two is. Not that one. Drinking water. And.
The mobile popped over this wireless router thing for me.
All right. This is going to be a disaster. And this is our last one, and this was for Teacher Appreciation Week.
Hi, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. We just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to all the teachers working from home.
We appreciate your time and your being, please stay safe. I hope you're safe, see you next week.
Thank you, teachers, for helping us learn.
Thank you, teachers, for going above and beyond what's expected of you.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
We thank you for everything you've done.
We miss you.
Thank you to my fifth grade teachers, Ms. Piston, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Crawford. Thank you for all that you've done for me this year.
Thank you, teachers, we miss you.
Just a couple of Panthers here, hoping that all of our teachers in Frankfort, Franklin County know how much they're appreciated today and every day.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, no, not again. Okay.
Thank you, those are good.
Those are the things that we did, that last one, those were all F P B employees and their kids, and we had fun with that, so did the employees.
Thank you. Anything else, any board member that we have that we need to discuss? We don't, as I understand it, we had on the agenda in case we need it, but we don't have any need to go into a closed session. So, uh, does anybody else have anything we need to discuss or bring up?
No, just look forward to those budget documents.
Yeah, and then if not, we'll wait, Gary, for you to send out some dates, and we can, everybody can chime in on what date we want to try to have that work session. And if there's nothing else to cover, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, assuming that, uh, no discussion and no objection, uh, everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I said it, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.